Because it's 700 feet in the wrong direction. The only one is 700 in the wrong direction. Now, you can respond to this crash, this public health emergency, safety emergency, the same way that you responded to the squatter member. You can use quick build options to shut down one of the six lanes on the planet. You could do that right now. You could start it this week. You could use it to narrow one of the lanes on Eastbound Plymouth. It's 15 feet wide. You could add vertical posts in the unused portion of the center lane. All of these will calm traffic and... We need to do something, though. Doing nothing is not an option. We need to do something, and we're waiting for you to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Kim.
... conducted an investigation as indicated by state code. Process of blocks. The attempts at internal resolution wasn't worked. It happens for internal oversight. The issues included missing evidence. There's one sign. Was declined before determination of the municipal cause. City did not respond. The evidence was... Boyer's request later determined or indicated that documented evidence did not. It's a natural disclosure. Only one side has information in the opportunity for some of the work. From the state of the city, absence required. The two have mandated decades ago, every process is a necessity. For them, covered by their request and confirmed by the mayor. Inconsistent application of precedent was not followed for any particular reason. This was discovered. And that a point of all of these issues, few of these issues, and by the same individual who oversaw the initial creating of interest, the same outcome. The county overwrote the original document with a new date of onset. Confirmed written records. The officials wrote that these investigative practices were under redetermination. An elected leader wrote that this process is both regular and fair. Did not deny the specific issues in the interest of transparency. I do have written records, clear requests. I'm intentionally focusing on the process, on the specific outcome, because the reach of these problems is discovered if we're making appointments, writing that this is the standard, this is regular and fair. This is an issue of what our standards of use are of impartial and ethical use. Having a political or financial state for any part, or as a student, really end up on the team of winning what is right. Everyone here brought an issue that they care enough about to come here in person. The state even would see them now. They expect impartiality for all of those concerned. I say, over. No, like, same standard.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alan Haber.
The last time I was here, here, of course, was much the last one standing for the Commons, and I'm still here. Perhaps if you had heard me before I had your discussion, yeah, on this, you might have postponed consideration on this very topic. You should might move to reconsider that. And if there was any new vote projected, it should be for November of 2026, not August. Action was contrary, is contrary, the city charter avoids 3130 votes, the majority, is contrary to your oath of office. I did try to alert you that there was a prior agreement. Next step in the implementation of the 2018 vote would be the issue of regular proposals and consultant help. You are avoiding avoiding that. I noticed in your agenda, IME way down, the line in the governor's office, state merely, legal services investigating your actions in the city charter will certainly receive information, your violation of due process, proper process, and I urge you to take a step to pause and do this the right way. After some intelligent consideration is added to the comments, likely you will see whatever idea that is found, as many people have enough to vote for. Building the library plan might then, if you don't like the comments, be appropriate to consider, is not now. But really, the saddest part of your actions is never really looked at the beauty of the ideas and the concepts put together in the comments. You've shined it on, the city administrator has shined it on. This was great work done by citizens for the city that should receive consideration. It'd be a green space in the center of the city, or that's what the people want. And put this up, likely you will not find it receiving the need to vote desire if you want. Anyhow, be considered.
Thank you. Further communications today from council. Councilmember Adina.
Thanks. Just wanted to let folks know, those who can hear me at least, that Councilmember Gazi Edwin and I have our upcoming Ward Three Listening Hour at Mallett's Creek Library this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. Our new Public Services Area Administrator, Jordan Roberts, will be there as our special guest.
Councilmember Gazi Edwin.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everyone who was able to attend the Beyond the Bridge, Solution to Homelessness documentary screening and conversation. I think that, you know, the takeaway message was that all of these systems have to work collaboratively together, and I'm proud of us as a city for sitting in the room and really talking about how we're here, we're willing to work together with other systems, and I'm looking forward to us continuing those partnerships. And I'm proud that so many people, almost 1,000 people from our city, were entrusted in that conversation that means something. Thanks.
Councilmember Watson.
Please join Councilmember Malik and me for a Ward Two Listening Session this Saturday, March 22nd, from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the library's trade room branch in the multipurpose room. The first portion of the session will be centered on housing, but we will leave time to take resident questions on any issue. Hope to see you there.
Councilmember Briggs.
Miller Road is going to be closed starting Monday. And we can go on without tools for that.
Further communication from council. We have before us the Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please, to approve the Consent Agenda? Moved by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Marier. Discussion of the Consent Agenda. Councilmember Adina.
Can we please pull CA 10?
Further discussion of the Consent Agenda.
Just to note that CA 1...
I'll note that, as your agendas in the House reveal, and perhaps the agenda online reveals, CA 1 has been withdrawn by staff and is not a part of the Consent Agenda. Further discussion. All in favor of the Consent Agenda, with the exception of, of course, CA 1 and CA 10? All opposed. The Consent Agenda is approved, with the exception of CA 1, CA 10, with 10 council members present, all voting the affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement with respect to CA 7, CA 12, CA 14, CA 16, CA 17, CA 19, CA 21, CA 22. CA 10 Resolution directing the city administrator to negotiate a revised consent judgment in support of development for 2857 Packard Road, moved by Councilmember Adina, seconded by Councilmember Dish. Discussion, please, of CA 10. Councilmember Dish.
Are these on or off?
They're not on.
They're not on, so I will use my large audience...
Yes.
So, 2857...
Councilmember Dish.
... 7.78 of the wood in...
Mayor...
Hold on for a second.
The CTN booth is telling me that even though they're not broadcasting, if you turn them on, it may help with a later replay of he's trying to record.
Okay, great. Then I'll turn it on and still...
Still use your big person voice.
Still try to project. So, anyway, it's a privately owned parcel on Packard near Cobblestone Farm and Bureau Park. It is zoned R4E with conditions, which is a zoning category that allows for single-family homes attached or detached in closer proximity to each other than we see in parts of the city that require large minimum lot sizes. As many of you know and has been mentioned, the site has also been under a consent judgment that was reached by the Washtenaw County Circuit Court in 2020. That consent judgment provided for construction of 51 homes, maximum home size of 2,000 square feet, half would be single-family detached and half single-family attached townhouse style homes. It also provided protection for the preservation of 62 woodland trees and 13 landmark trees, and approved a tree maintenance and management plan to be implemented for five years after completion of construction. That plan called out for protection two landmark trees, a large bur oak and a slightly smaller but still pretty large bur oak, and one or both of those trees may now be no longer living. The important thing to know is that more than five years later, the property is still undeveloped. The owner wishes to sell it, which is, of course, their right. This Consent Agenda item asks council to authorize Mr. Dehoney, our city administrator, to seek an alternative development proposal. And that alternative would be sought in view of a concept plan from a developer that is attached to the agenda. That concept proposes to develop the site with fewer than 51 homes, all single-family detached. This is an incremental change to the agreement imposed by the consent judgment, and it works within the constraints of that consent judgment. It is mindful of green space, it is protective of trees, and it offers, it would offer, a housing typology that the city desires, which is single-family, one-story home, or one-floor homes. Now, in working with the developer on the new concept plan, council asks Mr. Dehoney to prioritize the following values. Assessment and protection of landmark trees and woodlands on the site. That's value one. Second, zero or reduced carbon emissions from the development when compared to typical construction.
Councilmember...
Three, yep, fully electric, and four, provision of diverse housing forms.
Thank you. Councilmember Adina.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I wanted to speak briefly on this because this is a property that has been of discussion in the community since before I was on council. It's something that I worked on early in my first term when, you know, after we had entered into, we were entered into this consent judgment, you know, there was actually interest from another developer in this site, or in this property, and at the time was proposing kind of a multi-story, sustainable development at the site. Unfortunately, that proposal did not come together. We were, you know, the city was quite interested in moving forward. I know that there was considerable conversation with nearby neighbors who had participated in public meetings with a potential developer, and to the extent that even because it was a fully sustainable, carbon-neutral design, it was really thoughtful of kind of the wooded space that was around it, that the city was actually interested in potentially partnering and helping to fund a portion of acquiring that property in order for it to move forward. Unfortunately, the reality was that that proposal never was able to move forward. My understanding is that the developer at the time was not able to secure funding for the proposal, and as a result, we weren't able to move forward with it. And so, you know, there have been a number of things proposed at this site over the years, and currently, any, you know, Mr. Weber could go in, or Mr. Weber, the current owner, could sell this property, and the current consent judgment could be built there by right. And so, what this does, this would empower our city administrator and our staff, by extension, to go in and to negotiate an outcome that prioritizes some of our city's goals and our city's desires at the site. I know through my conversations with staff, one of the things that we're going to do is make sure that, you know, as we're looking at these landmark trees that were desired for us to preserve, that we're not just going to take the developer's word for it, that they are, in fact, dead. We would go in and do that ourselves before, you know, those types of things as we're negotiating this out. But the reality is, I think, you know, from what I know from conversations with my constituents, from what I know of conversations with staff and those in the community who have had an interest in this site, the reality is that the current consent judgment is not the favorite outcome of anyone. And so, ultimately, I see this as, you know, a step forward that potentially at least allows something to happen here with us prioritizing some of our city priorities. And so, you know, I am comfortable moving this forward. My understanding is that a final plan would ultimately have to come back and be approved by this body.
Further discussion? Councilmember Ackman.
I have a question, I think, for staff, and sorry, I'm not very good at projecting my voice, but I'll try. Could staff speak to how the consent judgment impacts the process that we follow for this? So, I understand what we're approving tonight, but would it still be subject to planning, commission, review, meetings, and such? And if not, why not? Could someone help me understand? Thank you.
I'll talk louder as well, as best I can. I hope to my best to answer and stare squarely at the city, in case you have... In the consent judgment process, I mean, it is a process that's been decided and filed. Something regardless of what we do has to be done to amend that original approval. It exists and is the purview or review over the site going forward until we use it differently. Consent judgment is ultimately council approval in total, and whether it's to amend that consent judgment, dissolve that consent judgment, or do anything otherwise, it is a council decision. You can dictate that there be additional reviews in that process prior to the consent giving to you, but it is not required as if the standard development process were. So, you guys can dictate the process to the extent you feel necessary. You can review and approve a revised consent judgment if you feel like it is incredibly close and consistent. There are things you want to input. We're certainly able to do that by referring it to those boards of commission, or letting us know through Mr. Dehoney that he would like those to be reviewed prior to. So, I think the process as defined is that the consent is amended or changed by the council. That is the only requirement. However, it is a completely discretionary process to that point. I think I got close.
I agree. The ultimate approval is the courts, but council says we want to go to court. How council gets there, you can dictate. Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. We now come to a set of public hearings. Public hearings are opportunities for members of the public to speak to council in the community about the specific subject matter of the public hearing. To speak at a public hearing, one need not have signed up in advance, but your speech must relate to the subject matter of the public hearing. That is to say, the specific item on the agenda to which the public hearing relates. Speakers in all instances will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Public hearing number one, an ordinance to amend Section 55 zoning rezoning of 1.15 acres from TWP Township to PUD Planned Unit Development District. Hickory Way 3, PUD zoning and supplemental regulations, 1146 South Maple Road. Is there anyone in House who would like to speak at this public hearing? Can't hurt.
Hi, so I'm Wendy Carney-Saxon, the Director of Real Estate Development at Avalon Closey, and a physician of Hickory Way 3 Development. Just really appreciate your moving forward, agenda as is, and insurance with this one. As was mentioned, we do have a particular funding source, okay? About 60% of the funding. We have two rounds here. We actually have a site plan in place to go with the application work. So, the background, months ago, down here, no one... Did not get it. So, we'll see, it's always been a little fight. They also changed their score every year. This is... Anyway, so just background, really do appreciate it. In general, just really appreciate being here. We're excited about the outlook, that we have a bunch of everybody in units on board on one of these units where the households, homelessness, and... Again, we're excited, right? And yeah, so the approvals, and our team this year, and... It's really appreciate...
Is there anyone else in House who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, I don't have any callers online with their hands raised.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Public hearing number two, resolution to approve 1146 South Maple Road, Hickory Way 3, PUD Site Plan and Development Agreement. Is there anyone in House who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, I don't have anyone online for this hearing.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. We have before us the regular meeting minutes of March 3, 2025. May I have a motion, please, to approve these minutes? Moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Dish. Discussion of the minutes. All in favor? All opposed? The minutes are approved. B1, an ordinance to amend Chapter 55 zoning rezoning of 1.15 acres from TWP Township to PUD Planned Unit Development District. Hickory Way 3, PUD zoning and supplemental regulations, 1146 South Maple Road. Moved by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Dish. Discussion, please, of B1. Councilmember Dish.
This proposal is accompanied by a site plan, which we will discuss next and about which I will have more to say, but all there is to say here is that this parcel is currently zoned township, and we are asked to rezone it as PUD, and we should do that.
Conclusory, but thank you. Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? DS1, resolution to approve the 1146 South Maple Road, Hickory Way 3, PUD Site Plan and Development Agreement. Moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Adina. Discussion, please, of DS1. Councilmember Dish.
As we just heard, this project will add to the existing affordable housing complexes, Hickory 1 and 2, a four-story building providing 39 additional affordable one-bedroom residential units. We see a project like this, and we are grateful. Homelessness has increased 20% overall in Washtenaw County since 2020. There is a 50% increase for those who experience chronic homelessness. To approve this PUD, we need to have it meet eight criteria, which I will briefly review because we should always speak to the criteria for the PUD. This project more than meets the first criteria for a planned unit development, which is that it must have a beneficial effect for the city on present and potential surrounding land uses. Not only is this a 100% affordable housing project, but at least 35% of the units will be accompanied by supportive services. In addition, it will meet National Green Building Silver Standard, which is green plus net zero or equivalent. It will be all-electric and energy-efficient building envelope with high-performance windows and energy-efficient fixtures and equipment. Second, this beneficial effect could not be achieved under any other zoning classification. We are getting more open space with the PUD than required by R4E, and the PUD allows us to modify a setback requirement so that we can meet the MISHDA parking requirements without losing housing units. Third, the uses do not negatively affect public utilities or surrounding properties, which it does not because it's consistent with multifamily residential, which is adjacent. Fourth, the uses are consistent with the 2009 Comprehensive Planned Land Use Element, which recommends multifamily development for this area. The fifth criteria is moot because this is a 100% affordable project. The supplemental, sixth, supplemental regulations provide sufficient justification and performance standards to monitor these benefits. As I mentioned, we meet criteria seven because there are 20 parking spaces, which is a reduction of spaces to an amount at or near the minimum that ensures eligibility for MISHDA funds. And finally, there is no disturbance to natural features and/or historically significant architectural features that we need to be concerned about.
Further discussion?
So, I'd like it if we would approve it.
Further discussion? Councilmember Briggs.
Just very briefly, thank you for that overview and I'm excited to be seeing more affordable housing coming into the fifth ward and phase three of this project. It's a welcome addition.
Further discussion? Councilmember Watson.
Just a note on the funding for this project. It was last week, the urban county recommended that the Board of Commissioners approve $3.4 million in home and home ARP HUD funds. And if you recall, when the county was debating whether to use home ARP funds, many community members, including members of the InArbor City Council, advocated that a greater percentage of that money should be used for affordable housing development because there are so few funding sources for development. The outcome of that was that 60% of the funds of home ARP were moved toward development and that, and this project was basically the sole beneficiary of those funds. So, it shows that, you know, our choices when we are allocating funding do bear fruit and do result in development.
Further discussion? Further discussion? I'd just like to echo my colleagues' gratitude for Avalon and your team members for moving forward with Hickory 1 and 2 and now, pardon me, Hickory Way 3. Obviously, we are in great need as a community of more affordable housing, and it is outstanding that we have this opportunity to add 39 new units and to help support those who are important members of our community. And we are committed to doing it where we can as we can, so thank you. Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It's approved. DS2, resolution authorizing issuance of 2025 capital improvement bonds for the fire station number four replacement project not to exceed $12 million. Moved by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Ayer. Discussion, please, of DS2. Councilmember Dish.
I just want to say I'm really excited to approve this item because this is going to be a phenomenal project and make us a leader in sustainability and give us maybe the first in Michigan sustainable net zero fire station.
Further discussion? For my part, I'd like to, you know, I do a lot of echoing around here, but I'd also like to echo Councilmember Dish's comments and also state that in addition to its sustainability benefits, it's important to note that this is a workplace. And, you know, we so value the work that our first responders do generally and our firefighters with specificity. And the fire stations are where they spend a good deal amount of their time. They have 24-hour shifts. They are homes away from homes, and this home is not adequate for the purpose. It is, has electric problems. It was not designed for a mixed-gender workforce, one that we value. And so, it's doubly exciting in addition to the sustainability elements of the work that we're going to be able to do at this fire station to support those who support us. Further discussion? All in favor? Oh, no, I got to roll call this, don't I? Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Adina.
Councilmember Adina?
Yes.
Councilmember Gosey Edwin?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackman?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison?
Absent.
Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Councilmember Malik?
Yes.
Motion carries.
C1, an ordinance to amend sections 9, 101, 9103, 9105, and 9109 of chapter 111, Fire Prevention of Title IX of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Discussion, please, of C1. All in favor? All opposed? It's approved. C2, an ordinance to add chapter 35 Sustainable Energy Utility to Title II Utilities and Services of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember Ackman, seconded by Councilmember Briggs. Councilmember Briggs.
I don't have much to say except for it's exciting to get to this point, right? A lot of hard work and gratitude to voters for approving the SEU in November. And it's exciting to actually create the structure for this and the framework for moving an SEU forward in our community.
Further discussion? Well, members of the Ann Arbor community deserve to have 100% renewable, reliable, low-cost energy. And we are, I am incredibly excited that the community has gotten behind the SEU 7921 and that we, and when I say we, of course, I mean staff, has done the great and good work to get us to this place. We are setting up the structure for the SEU. We will fill the structure with people who are committed and excited to provide high-quality, 100% renewable, reliable energy service to customers in Ann Arbor, folks who choose to join. And I think that the SEU, the A2 SEU is a thing that members of the public will, over a course of time, be incredibly excited and proud about. It's a great and good thing, and I'm so glad that we're moving it on forward to second reading. Councilmember Ackman.
All right, all right, I'll chime in. I wanted to point to the fact that this is getting national attention at this point. I believe this would be the first of its kind in the country, and I think that's something for us to be proud about the voters approving and, you know, and I think that's why you're seeing so much excitement expressed at this table. There was an article published within the last week in The Conversation. I'd encourage people to go to that. It talks about, it's written by an environmental policy analyst at the University of Michigan who works in the energy space and talks about this kind of explosion in interest in local power, how people are frustrated with their investor-owned utilities, and how the hurdle to getting past that is really high, which we've also talked about in the recent past. You know, and so this offers us, I think, a bridge, a way that we can operate something that would be sustainable and reliable alongside our current utility. And I'm just so excited that this is getting the attention that it deserves, and I hope that not only does this serve our community well, but it serves as a model to other communities.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. C3, an ordinance to amend section 5.15, 5.16 of chapter 55 Unified Development Code of Title V of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Ayer. Discussion, please, of C3. Councilmember Dish.
Just because it's kind of funny when we get to remove use-specific standards that come to us from a different era. So, these, what we will be, these amendments remove use-specific standards related to general entertainment uses that limit the seating capacity of enclosed theaters in the C1B district. And if that sounds weirdly specific, it is, and that's what's wrong with it. And then, there's another one that restricts the locations of, of all things, pinball parlors. So, these limitations and restrictions date back to an earlier time with different standards of propriety than we have today. They are no longer relevant or desired. So, removing these restrictions will remove a barrier for such uses to continue operating in or be newly established in mixed-use districts, and that's probably okay. So, I hope you will join me, no should, in supporting this.
Further discussion? Councilwoman Ackman.
I support pinball, and I don't know why we legislated this out of places, so bring it on.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. C4, an ordinance to amend sections 5.17, 5.27, and 5.28 of chapter 55 Unified Development Code of Title V Buildings Design Requirements on Primary and Secondary Streets, Design Review Board and Design Review, and to repeal section 1239 of chapter 8 of Title I of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Ayer. Discussion, please, of C4. Councilmember Dish.
I'm sorry. So, this item offers us an opportunity to streamline the development process so that we can focus on affordability and sustainability goals. And this is an opportunity that we asked staff to provide. It comes before us as a follow-up to the Economic Development Report that former Deputy City Administrator John Fornier presented to us in December 2023 after having spent more than a year researching it. That was directed by the Economic Development Corporation and very much spearheaded by Councilmember Ayer. On April 1, 2024, council adopted a resolution containing 13 measures that were supposed to streamline the development process and alleviate undue burdens that slow it down. And that resolution specifically identified the design review, one of those resolutions specifically identified the design review process as one such burden. So, what are the burdens associated with design review, and are they worth the cost? The Design Review Board adds a month or more to the development process, and the reason is that it has to comply with the Open Meetings Act, which has posting requirements. An additional reason is that the citizen participation meeting has to happen after the DRB meeting. That meeting also has to be noticed 10 days prior to submittal of site plan currently. So, this is a delay in site plan submittal, which is really a delay in the kickoff of the entire review process. Moreover, and I have to underscore this, each project involves a lot of staff time. Staff has to take pictures of the project and note, and they are responsible for noticing the nearby residents. And time that we ask staff to support the DRB is time that they cannot spend writing ordinances that we want to implement the new comprehensive land use plan. Finally, I would just add that in planning commission's debate over this resolution, it came up that these design review guidelines that are followed by the DRB are not mandatory, and they really can't be because good design is not something you can measure. And it is hard to mandate something that you cannot measure. So, we are having a delay for a process that is not mandatory and often ends up with sort of competing advice and an outcome that is in the taste of some but not others. So, this feels like an okay thing to remove from our process.
Thank you. As Councilmember Dish noted, a year ago, city council, as part of our economic development package of resolutions, specifically voted unanimously to direct the city administrator to bring forward changes to our development process that would remove mandatory design review board meetings, review board hearings, and instead make design review a staff function. This was a clear and deliberate decision aimed at making it faster, easier, and less costly to build new housing, something we all agreed was urgently needed. Staff in the planning commission have done exactly what we asked of them. We've acknowledged repeatedly that Ann Arbor is in a housing crisis and that removing unnecessary barriers to housing construction is essential. We have a chance to follow through on a process that we ourselves initiated from this table to support efficient, thoughtful development and make real progress on housing, and I believe we should take it.
I would like to ask staff a clarifying question because I think that I might have gotten a little bit lost in the staff description that accompanied this, and hopefully it will be fast to clear up. I see the attached ordinance, and it doesn't include this. However, in the body of the accompanying text to the item in Legistar, it has a second bullet point talking about, at the working session of planning commission, they expressed interest in, as three different bullet points. And one of the ones that it talks about is the exterior insulation finishing system. Is that part of this or not?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, and the planning manager. That was not part of the city council resolution directive. We do have a very short codified design requirements in the Unified Development Code. That's the section. Over recent years, EFIS or exterior insulated finishing systems have been prohibited. They generally have a poor reputation for design and aesthetics. However, we have had several designers reference that they do add an insulated value to buildings, therefore have the potential to help with an improved building efficiency. And so, staff proposed that change as a way to potentially provide another tool to increase the energy efficiency of our buildings, potentially at the cost of design.
But is that part of what we're considering in this change tonight?
That is included in this.
Okay. So, I guess I have a follow-up question, which is that I understand that it adds a level of efficiency. However, I also understand that this material has concerns in humid environments, concerns with longevity. Are we asked to balance those? Has it changed with technology and installation? Like, how do we? Yeah.
So, I think those trade-offs still exist. I am not a materials expert. I offer it as part of a conversation we've had with architects over, like I said, recent years. At its core, it's foam, so I believe those trade-offs would still exist. I think it is just that it's material that potentially compromises some of those aspects for improved energy efficiency. Just for a way of example, if people aren't familiar with it, oftentimes on commercial buildings, you see sort of a faux stucco kind of finish. It's very common in a lot of drugstore chains. That is an example of this. But for this ordinance, to be clear, it's simply that I didn't do any of the material analysis or sort of long-term material analysis, light analysis. It's strictly an opportunity if we wanted to add another tool to exterior insulation or installation.
Okay, thanks. I guess I'm somewhat concerned because I don't feel like I have the technical knowledge to evaluate this, and it seems like it's potentially a concerning change, so I'm not quite sure what to make of it.
We waived the EFIS, I guess, prohibition for the, I believe it was for one of the developments, either 721, South Forest, or 611 Church.
I think it is permitted as sort of a secondary material, just to sort of remove any restrictions of that. So, I don't think it's been used a lot in the downtown, but it certainly has been used by these customers.
Okay. Yeah, I think I remember one of the developments, we removed it specifically to improve the efficiency of one of the buildings.
So, I guess this is a couple pieces. One, that part makes this more complicated with regards to, there's sort of a new element in here, which, as I mentioned, we don't have the technical expertise, obviously. It doesn't sound like we actually have the technical expertise. Do we have the technical expertise on staff around this to understand the full, the pros and cons of this?
I don't know that question. I would have, like, we have to consult. Any other questions that you'd like to have answered? Yeah, can we answer? I just want to make it absolutely clear, it's not part of the decision. It's absolutely. It's perfectly appropriate.
Okay. I'd like to propose that we strike this element of the changes right now to separate it so that we can have that as a separate conversation and on its own merits. I have no idea what section this is. It's the second. Yeah, yeah. Yep. I couldn't find it within the ordinance itself, so I wasn't sure.
For my part, I'd be inclined to do that at this stage, not knowing why it came in in the first place, and would, does this sort of thing that we could remove that second reading of that kicking back first reading?
Can we?
Once we learn more about.
I would prefer to just remove it and have a separate conversation. It's fine. I mean, we can have it a different way.
It would be removing the.
And I believe that section also concerns allowing wood isn't allowed material, right? So, there might even be further, you know?
If you're proposing to add wood, that's not part of the.
Right. So, I mean, I would agree that it seems like a separate discussion, and I guess I don't have an opinion on the mechanics of how we do it.
Yeah, I guess if it wouldn't require us kicking it back to first reading. Dot, dot, dot.
My response to that would be if you were to advance the ordinance in its totality now, it would be noticeable totality. If you elected to remove those sections at the time of adoption, my legal advice would be that that would be fine because you would notice the sections who are modified.
Yep. Okay. So.
I deeply respect Mr. Leonard, but I reserve the right to evaluate.
I deeply respect Mr. Leonard, but I reserve the right to evaluate that because I don't understand the materiality of those changes just sitting right here. I'm not inclined to disagree with you. I just want to not assume that. I reserve the right to evaluate that.
Okay. I am not an attorney, but I also under, I appreciate the logic of what Mr. Leonard is saying. And just in the interest of efficiency, I think it's easier to move it forward and strike that if, once, I'm assuming we'll get more information, staff will get us more information so that we can be informed when it comes up next time, rather than having to write a whole separate resolution and ordinance changes. To me, that seems the more efficient way to go. So I'll be voting no.
Apparently, the unified of, oh, it is, here is, and it's a rigid foam or a, echoing on, we're both going to manage this, allow that material, exterior, and for the purposes of allowing another potential school, add to this. It sounds like there's a question about adding, I'm going to do the work on trying to bring some additional information. So I'm glad you're here. Before, everything, and with you, as likely prior to the first office, publishing that is, I promise that it is. Okay. There's bullet points now. We talked about.
Apparently.
Mr. Leonard, is there a section number you can cite that you're striking?
That the ordinance?
That the, yes. I'm sorry.
Five point seventeen points.
Thank you.
Further questions of the amendment? Will follow, please. Councilmember Adina?
Councilmember Adina?
No.
Councilmember Gauzy Edwin?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Iyer?
No.
Councilmember Ackman?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish?
No.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
No.
Thank you. Sorry. Councilmember Harrison, absent. Councilmember Watson?
No.
Councilmember Malik?
Yes.
Motion fails.
For the discussion debate motion?
So as some may know, I have recently raised some questions about sort of the merits of how to consider design review board. As can happen, in a year, one can get some feedback from the community, both questions from members of our own design review board, from design professionals, from former planning managers, from, and from lots of folks who, around the community as well, who have just raised questions, you know, good and bad of whether this, you know, the merits of the process by which we take this. I think we can all, what seems to be clear to me is that the design review board hasn't necessarily resulted in our community's expectations, and it has added additional process and time that hasn't resulted in maybe the same, the outcomes that we might hope. And yet, what I consistently have heard probably more than anything else about design, about building in our community is design. And so I am, I have been interested in figuring out ways that we might be able to address that. And currently, we have a commission that is comprised of design professionals and great folks that are volunteering their time with the community, and sometimes it's nice to engage folks while they're still working and volunteering with the city and get their thoughts and their insight before sort of thanking them for their time and their service. I don't think that there's support for that, and I think there's maybe concerns about taking that approach. And so I'm not going to vote no on this tonight. However, my concerns remain, and I think the community concerns at large remain around this issue. And so people love our downtown, as they should, and we want them to. And part of that is the aesthetic nature of it. It's not just simply the development. People want more than that, and they expect more of that, and they should. And so I think we need to figure out a way that we can move forward on that, and I think there's been some conversations about how we might be able to move that forward within code changes. But I'm going to be looking for opportunities, talking with staff about how we might be able to gain some traction on this issue because I don't think simply saying, "We're going to have more creativity if we don't have voluntary design guidelines," is really going to move the needle. The reality is, these have been voluntary. Creative flexibility exists today. This is what we have. So it's not a matter of, we're going to get, suddenly get more creative, in my opinion. I think we've got some challenges. And other communities have had, you know, made some gains in this area. I think we can too.
I want to point out that the city of Ann Arbor does have downtown design guidelines that are published on the website, that are provided various points throughout the development process. It includes items such as identify and then reinforce the positive characteristic of adjacent sites, design sidewalk level features and facilities to provide enrichment of the pedestrian experience, orient the building location to best accommodate climate, rainfall, and area drainage patterns. It's an incredibly comprehensive guide to what we expect and what our, in an expression in design of what our community values are. So I would recommend we, maybe put this in the context of, these materials live elsewhere and are also very clearly stated. And so having somebody else just say, "I'm going to read this for you and tell you how to do it," versus putting it back on the developer to follow these guidelines, it seems like the redundant step that we want to get rid of. So I have supported the amendment, and I appreciate what the intention is, but I don't want to lose sight that the city has put a lot of time and effort and thought and care into these guidelines that already exist. And so maybe that's some of what you're talking about, is just, how do we amplify that? What's a better use of those materials? But to act as though we're stripping away something that doesn't exist is not a correct characterization of what's happening with this particular item on the table right now.
I wanted to ask Mr. Leonard, while he's here, what role the design review guidelines would play in the planning commission's or any other bodies or staff member approval process moving forward?
Thank you. So I struggled with this one, I think, because, you know, we're often asked to hold multiple values at the same time and balance them, and I'm all in for making our process less onerous. I only want it to be as onerous as it needs to be. And, but I think, you know, we've also said as a body that we care about placemaking and the quality of the built environment, and I know that, like Councilmember Briggs said, that that's something that we hear. But I also think that I'm hearing, you know, loud and clear, and also from experience, that the design review board, you know, has had a mixed outcome. Incremental improvements, sometimes perhaps worse than what we would have wound up with otherwise. And I also understand that having design come kind of top-down by committee might in fact run counter to aesthetic preferences to have some heterogeneity and some variety rather than like the basic mid that appeals to a lot of people. So, anyway, I struggled with this, you know, as of writing my newsletter last night, of course. That's the lovely thing about writing and publishing a newsletter, you get to eat your words later. But I do think, given the fact that this is advisory, that it's not really leading to appreciable benefits for the city and the built environment, that it is creating extra time for staff, which we know is in short supply, I think this is the right move to shift the responsibility to professional planning staff and to, you know, if we need to address the guidelines at some other point, you know, we've got a big UDC rewrite coming, so we can address that then. So I'll be voting to eliminate tonight.
Councilmember Adina?
Yes.
Councilmember Gauzy Edwin?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Iyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackman?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison, absent. Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Councilmember Malik?
Yes.
Motion carries.
DC 1 Resolution to authorize the city administrator to negotiate city participation in the Arbor South project, including potentially owning, operating, and bonding for parking decks. Revive, Councilmember Iyer, second by, Councilmember Adina?
And I guess, with apologies and regret, look to this postponed to our next meeting. So moved by Councilmember Adina, second by Councilmember Watson. Mr. Doherty, did you have a moment beforehand?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to take this opportunity to welcome Joe Giant, who is seated in the audience. Could you stand so they could see you? This is his first day, and of course, the system crashed on his first day, but he stuck, he stuck around, and we're thrilled to have him here, and I just wanted you all to be able to put a face with a name. He's going to get around for individual meetings, but I wanted to acknowledge his presence. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Discussion postponed. All favor? Vote postponed. Sorry, I missed it. DC 2 Resolution to revive 2025 council calendar. Revive, Councilmember Iyer, second by Councilmember Gauzy Edwin. Discussion is a B two. All favor? Or opposed? It's approved. Do you have the party opposed session today?
We do.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison, absent. Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Councilmember Malik?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Close session. This one.
And I also understand that having design come kind of top-down by committee might in fact run counter to aesthetic preferences to have some heterogeneity and some variety rather than like the basic mid that appeals to a lot of people. So, anyway, I struggled with this, you know, as of writing my newsletter last night, of course. That's the lovely thing about writing and publishing a newsletter, you get to eat your words later. But I do think, given the fact that this is advisory, that it's not really leading to appreciable benefits for the city and the built environment, that it is creating extra time for staff, which we know is in short supply. I think this is the right move to shift the responsibility to professional planning staff and to, you know, if we need to address the guidelines at some other point, you know, we've got a big UDC rewrite coming, so we can address that then. So I'll be voting to eliminate tonight.
Councilmember Adina?
Yes.
Councilmember Gazi Edwin?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Iyer?
Yes.
Councilman Ackman?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison, absent? Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Councilmember Malik?
Yes.
Motion carries.
DC-1 Resolution to authorize the city administrator to negotiate city participation in the Arbers South project, including potentially owning, operating, and bonding for parking decks. Revive, Councilmember Iyer second by. And I guess I, with apologies and regret, look to postpone to our next meeting. So, move by Councilmember Adina, second by Councilmember Watson. Mr. Doherty, did you have a moment beforehand?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to take this opportunity to welcome Joe Giant, who is seated in the audience. Could you stand so they could see you? This is his first day, and of course, the system crashed on his first day.[251.12][251.12](Laughter) But he stuck around. And we're thrilled to have him here, and I just wanted you all to be able to put a face with the name. He's going to get around for individual meetings, but I wanted to acknowledge his presence. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Discussion postponed. All favor? postponed. DC-2 Resolution to revive 2025 council calendar. Move by, Councilmember Iyer second by. Councilmember Gazi Edwin, discussion is a B two. All favor? Or opposed? It's approved. Do you have the floor for the closed session today?
We do.
Yes. Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison, absent? Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Councilmember Malik?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Closed session.
I would just like to draw your attention to items E4 and E5 on tonight's agenda. Other than that, thank you so much.